Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coleman.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the August 19th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Lomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bashertash?
Here.
Commissioner Biddle?
Here.
Commissioner Bowers?
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with a recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3, Public Statements.
We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on Items 5A through 6B, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
Thank you. All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
Make a motion to approve the consent items?
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Biddle? May I have a second, please?
I'll make a second.
And Commissioner Kater. For the sake of this vote, Commissioner Lomas will abstain, because she wasn't here last week, so... The last meeting, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote. You told me it's...[248.01][248.01](Laughter) Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please? Are we doing a roll call or are we doing a little computer thing?
We could try the computer.
All right. Did we resolve that issue?
Motion passes with Commissioner Lomas abstaining and Commissioner Bowers absent.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for Consent Public...
It's Consent Calendar Public Hearings.
This is the Consent Calendar...
Number 5.
You're 5, right?
Yes.
This is Consent Public Hearings. Okay. All right, so now I know where I am. Now is the time for Consent Public Hearing Items. If an item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the Non-Consent Public Hearing Items. At this time, I will open all the Consent Public Hearing Items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a Consent Public Hearing Item? These are Items 5A through 5D. Mr. Bowers? Madam Clerk, can you please note that Commissioner Bowers has arrived and is now seated and ready to go? Okay. All right. So, hearing none, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a Consent Public Hearing At this time, the Consent Public Hearing Items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on Consent Public Hearing Items, 5A through 5D, not removed, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make that motion.
No, thank you. Commissioner Lomas? May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Biddle? Madam Clerk, may we have a vote, please?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for Non-Consent Public Hearing Items. Before we begin, I want to explain... Sorry, we're having a little feedback here. I have it like on airport mode, so I don't know. Oh, this one? Hello? I don't know how to hang it up. Move it way over there. Okay, I'm very sorry. We're getting a little feedback from one of the phones up here. We have new technology up here that I am not familiar with.
That doesn't make sense for anybody.
(Laughter) Okay. All right, so let's get back on track. Now is the time for Non-Consent Public Hearing Items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report. Then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of all others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and by presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide your staff report for Item 6A?
Good evening, Chair Coleman, commissioners, members of the public. Thank you for attending tonight. Our first item is an appeal of a site plan review approval. This project's site is located near the corner of East California Avenue and Union Avenue. It is zoned for industrial use, however, it is developed with the Kern County Department of Human Services. The project that was submitted was the installation of a commercial coach, which would be used as an office. The project site that was provided with the application was for three and a quarter acres. Once we got the application with the overlay of the aerial, there were a couple of questions that staff immediately had, one being that the improvements shown on the site plan didn't necessarily align with what was actually on-site, and it was questioned if the commercial coach, which is 250 square feet approximately, was actually going to take up the entire three and a quarter acres, or if it could be reduced in size, the actual project size. Regardless, any new development, with very few exceptions, regardless of size, does require a site plan review. Therefore, on June 24th, the application was submitted pursuant to the municipal code. All applications shall include sufficient information to determine if the project is consistent with city regulations and development standards. Although this application was absent, some of the information to make that determination, it was deemed sufficient enough to go ahead and process for an initial review and provide comments back to the applicant. That review is performed by the Site Plan Review Committee, which consists of seven different departments, sometimes Rec. and Parks Department is included. Their review findings were consolidated into a letter dated July 19th and was provided back to the applicant. Some of the conditions that were incorporated into the Site Plan Review Letter, some conditions were informational to address possible plan revisions, such as a condition that stated that any structures near property lines or other structures would require a fire-resistant wall. If the structure was not to be moved, noting that this was a portable structure, if it was not to be removed, then that condition would not be applicable. Some conditions were required per city development standards, such as all parking and drive aisles are required to be paved. We do not allow gravel, unlike the county, in certain areas. And some conditions were added to comply with development standards and were based on the size that was submitted, the three and a quarter acres, and that included frontage improvements. There was a condition also included, noting that if the developer provides a phased plan for this three and a quarter acres, that the improvements would be limited to the adjacent frontage of what was being proposed, and maybe not the entire three and a quarter acres at On July 3rd, the applicant sent an email to the planning staff, objecting to one of the conditions, which was the curb gutter and sidewalk that was initially required around the entire site. The applicant was advised to contact Public Works and work it out with them, and in the best of my knowledge, that did not occur. On July 28th, the property owner filed an appeal to 11 conditions that were in the Site Plan Review Letter, and those conditions on appeal are addressed in the staff report, and the property owner believes those are unreasonable and a large financial burden that is not proportionate to the scale of the project. So that is why we're here tonight. Your commission has the ability, authority, I should say, to make a determination of whether or not an adopted development standard was done consistent with city ordinance. However, your commission does not have authority to add, delete, change, or modify adopted standards unless it is required to mitigate unavoidable environmental impacts. Before I provide staff's recommendation, as with most developers that sometimes have these comments, we do suggest that they go ahead and revise the plan, identify the existing improvements that are consistent with what's on-site, and if that entire three and a quarter acres is not being used to reduce that project size, and with that, the Site Plan Review Committee will review the new plan, they'll determine whether or not the conditions can be limited down, or likely even eliminated, some of the conditions. But based on the foregoing, staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the Development Services Department Director's decision to approve Site Plan Review Number 20-0102. And Site Plan Review Committee members are present if there's any specific questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, my name is Jacob Turner. I'm an architect and representative of the owner, so thank you for letting me talk, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for giving the presentation. Yeah, our scope of the project, as Ms. Johnson mentioned, is pretty small, but it does show on a very large site that does have a lot of paving and everything on it that is currently used as a county parking lot for county checkout vehicles, and the idea of this project is to get someone out in that back lot. There's a... Currently, if you look at the site, from the darker lot in the back where we're trying to propose the project, to the county building, and the rest of the county parking that's for the county building, there's a big drainage ditch that separates that. They're trying to get someone in that back lot so that lot can be utilized for their county cars and not have someone sitting out, you know, in the Bakersfield heat with an umbrella or something like that. They like to get them in a conditioned, you know, room. Nothing much. We're trying to do a small trailer. And the condition that we had the most issue with was the curb gutter and sidewalk requests that does request about 1,000 linear feet of curb gutter and sidewalk for about a 250 square foot building. So the project price, or the budget for the project, was roughly around $300,000, and the price for a curb gutter and sidewalk of that magnitude is going to be that or more. So we saw that as kind of a hardship for the project. You can understand bringing a project about and finding out your project budget's being doubled on curb gutter and sidewalk. Now, we don't ask that you... We aren't trying to request that it's repealed like that. We don't want to avoid that comment at all. We do want to do curb gutter and sidewalk, but we request that it be in proportion to the project. Our main entry is along the one side of the project, and it's... We'd like to update that and get curb gutter and sidewalk to that portion. There's currently an accessible path on kind of the inlet corner there, and that would be where we propose to do curb gutter and sidewalk, along with the proper street standard drive approach to get into the project. And the other two sides of the project are totally fenced and not access points for the project. So they didn't make sense to us to be able to put curb gutter and sidewalk to the project. No one walks around that way to access the project, so it wouldn't be beneficial to the project, and we didn't see the major purpose of doing all of that. So that was kind of our reasoning for the appeal, just so you have the background of it. So any questions for me before I step down?
No, we don't have any questions at this time. There'll be opportunity for commissioners to ask questions later.
Certainly. Thank you for your opportunity.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step forward and identify yourself and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only time to ask questions. Commissioner Wade?
Hi, could I ask some questions to you, please? Is the purpose of this building to house somebody that provides security for the parking lot?
Security, but also to check in vehicles and check out vehicles, so they will also have the key box for the vehicles there to be able... So yeah, I guess that's added security as well. So yeah, security would be one of the primary reasons for this.
And this person isn't a county or city or county employee? This is an employee of a private entity? Is that right?
I believe that would be a county employee, because they're managing all the county vehicles and everything. So the county would hire someone to manage their vehicles. I don't think that would be hired by the private entity. The private person does... A private entity does own the land that the county is leasing, but the county use is what's all over the property, and that's the primary use, and there shouldn't be private uses or entities.
So I hear in the... I heard in Mr. Johnson's staff report that they were hoping the applicant would come back, having reduced the scale of what they were proposing, and you guys didn't choose to do that, and I'm just curious why?
Yeah, I found that as confusing to me, so sorry for my confusion, but presenting the scale of the project, we're not adding paving or anything, the site had been paved before and is currently used as a parking lot currently, not at the scale they would prefer. So the project itself is just the commercial coach, and whatever is required by code, which would be accessible parking and additional striping and things like that, and of course, whatever is required by municipal code. So that's kind of where we are with it. We're... Yeah, that was kind of our scale of that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kater?
Questions for the applicant as well? Thank you. They're kind of similar to Commissioner Wade's, but... So then, am I correct in looking at the site plan that was submitted, that the extent of work to be done is really the northwest quadrant of the larger three-acre site?
Yes, and it's not just everything. We're not building a... Improving anything in the... All of the site north of the drainage line there. It just about covers where the star is on the little map above you. So that's about the extents that we were proposing.
Perfect. And then, so the vicinity map, except if we could pull up the applicant's site plan, is that possible? Just so that you're all looking at what I'm looking at? Yeah, that's perfect. It's a little small, but perfect. So in the vicinity map, the project site is actually identified as the entire county facility as well as this parking lot? So am I correct in assuming that this parcel is part of a larger campus that is the Kern County Administrative Building?
It is all one parcel, yes. So one, that weird, crazy big shape, is all part of one parcel, yes.
Great. And then, a question for Public Works, and maybe directed through the Planning Department. When an applicant comes with a very small, or relatively small-scaled project relative to a campus or a larger portion, is that application typically reviewed for the extent of work to be done, or as, "Let's revise this whole campus"?
I'll put it this way. I did mention in the presentation that there are a few exemptions to the Site Plan Review. I would note that this has been a parking lot for some time. It is repaved, it is restriped. That is one exemption. So a parking lot, restriping does not require a Site Plan Review. Had this project come in with a commercial coach as an office, and this was a brand-new parking lot, we would look at the entire thing. So we'd look at the whole three and a quarter acres out of this, as was noted, 16 and 1/2-acre site. But since that's already paved and the parking lot's there, if they were to reduce the scope of their project to show that it's just this office, and if they're agreeing to curb gutter and sidewalk along, I'll say, the western side, in my conversations with the Public Works Director, that's something they would gladly entertain.
So Public Works generally, it's... My understanding is it's improvements adjacent to the property site? So the definition of what the property site then becomes very relevant, is that correct?
For any improvement, it would be on the parcel, it would be for the frontage of the whole parcel.
Of the whole parcel, the whole three-acre parcel?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
So that's where the requirements came from, but as you mentioned, with discussions from the Public Works Director, we're open to revising or maybe even eliminating some of the conditions if they reduce the scope of the work.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lomas?
I also have a question for you. Excuse me. In the presentation, staff had indicated that they directed you to Public Works, and no one contacted them. Do you know why?
We're on a short timeline. The time for appeal is one week, and the time for when you get your letter, because it comes by mail, is you have to file appeal within 10 days of the letter date. So the letter dates happen, they mail the package, and it arrives to you. You have about four days to get it, read through everything, and take it in, and then file appeal. So the appeal process, we filed the appeal quickly because we didn't want to miss the date, and we came in close, but we did get appeal in. That was kind of the reason we did file appeal, because we didn't want to miss it. Contacting Public Works is definitely what we intend to do, and this was, hopefully, we knew once we filed the appeal, communication would start already, so that was the reason we didn't get in contact with Public Works instantly if we had to file appeal, and we were on a short timeline for that.
Thank you, Public Works. You take phone calls and questions, correct? You don't require an appointment? You'll take phone calls, correct?
Correct, yeah. We take phone calls, and to my knowledge, there was no outreach to us.
They're saying there was it.
But yeah, we...
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Since we have no opposition speakers, we don't really have a rebuttal period, so at this time, I will close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. Any commissioners wish to comment? I see Commissioner Kater trying to make the machine work. All right. Network... Oh, here we go. There you go. You're the current speaker, Mr. Kater.
Thank you. I will just start the conversation. I think, to me, this seems like a very strange thing for us to be reviewing, because it seems like a process that hasn't been worked through. You know, I deal with site plan reviews a lot, and a lot of the language that's being questioned is template language that gets worked through different departments, because site plan review means, "These are the things we've got to work out. Let's identify them, let's move forward." And so, to me, I think that while I'm sympathetic to appeal dates and it being a very quick thing, I think appeals also don't happen the next day, and I think there... The fact that there's been no dialogue from to Public Works or about the project, to me, yeah, just makes it seem like it's too early to be before this commission, because the city... There's not even really been an opportunity for dialogue with city staff, and I just think site plan review is the process that we've identified as a city of how commercial buildings are moved through our development process, and I just... To me, there's not a compelling reason at this point to say that this project is exempt from that process. And, you know, from that process, I haven't seen anything result that seems egregious or an overask, or because I don't have the information of what's actually... Because I don't have the information of what's actually being required. So for me, it's, you know, the ask just seems like a very initial request of, is site plan review wrong for this project? And I don't think it's wrong for the project. No. That's just my opinion. So I'd be curious to the other commissioners' opinion.
Commissioner Lomas.
Very well said. And so, I would agree with staff's recommendation. And if anyone else has anything, I would make that motion if it's time. Oh, good.
Commissioner Wade.
I agree. This is not ready for primetime. I feel like we... I feel like we're up here counting chickens all day and someone handed us an egg. It seems like to the applicant, to Mr. Turner, who, and I'm sure to the people you represent, someone just needed to pick up the phone, make a phone call, and then you could have determined pretty quickly that, I imagine, there's probably a way to make this thing happen. It's just not this way. And that just had to... There had to be a conversation. And maybe it would. I'm not, you know, committing the commission to anything. But like, I think this had to get reworked. And all that took was a conversation. So that's unfortunately primarily on you and the applicant in general. In a secondary way, someone from the city probably could have called them, too. It's... I know it's not your responsibility to do that. But like, if this is a matter of a conversation didn't happen to just get the project looking the way it's supposed to so it can pass through the process, this seems like it was an easy fix. I could be wrong because I don't know exactly where this is going, really. But just snapshot reaction, I agree. And I'll second your motion if you've made it already.
Okay. And how I heard the presentation was they were presented with the appeal. So they didn't know the appeal was coming. So I'm going to have to agree with staff on this one all the way. So I would like to make that motion.
So the motion, just to clarify?
Thank you.
It's to adopt the resolution denying the appeal?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, the motion.
Oh, can I add one thing?
Yes, you may.
So sorry. And also, too, to just expand a little bit, I've... Bakersfield and our staff is always known to be very cooperative and really want to help anyone that's asking for it. So I encourage you to work with them. They're very easy to work with. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't make any comments, but I think I agree with the other commissioners. And to Ms. Lomas's point, you know, we really try to work with developers to get projects through with the least amount of obstacles. And so, I think this project, the appeal is premature, I think. And I don't think that you've exhausted all your options there. So we have a motion by Commissioner Lomas and a second by Commissioner Wade. Madam Clerk, may I have a vote, please? Yeah, yes to deny.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I encourage the applicant to get with staff, Public Works and planning staff. And I think you'll find him receptive to working something out with you guys. So thank you for coming tonight.
If I may say one word, I appreciate Mr. Turner's comments. We can look at emailing our letters because we do require email be submitted on the application. But I would just caution that do not rely on an email. You will get a paper copy, but that will expedite review of our letter.
Okay, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please. I guess we went... I've got to back up. I think we're ready to go on to item 6B. And we're looking for Director Johnson for your staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. This request is a zoning modification. It is a single-family residential area located near Palm Avenue and Jenkins Road. The site is zoned estate, and it is approximately 1/3 acre in size. So the municipal code has development and design standards to protect public health, safety, general welfare. And also, those standards are to comply with building code, policies, and city guidelines. The municipal code also has a zoning modification to those design standards on three, basically three areas. And that is for automobile parking. You can ask for reduction in parking. Wall fence and hedge regulations, you can ask for increases in size, height, yard setbacks, and lot area standards. And in this case, what we're considering is a yard setback. And I'll get into more detail on that in a moment. This is being brought before your commission as a result of a public complaint regarding welding that was occurring on site. And that is a land use violation. When the code enforcement went out to investigate, they also identified a zoning violation, which is why we are here. And that zoning violation was for an unpermitted structure, and it was located within the side yard setback. Therefore, this zoning modification is requested to abate that zoning violation. This is a corner lot. And on a side yard setback, there is a requirement of 10 feet. That can be reduced to five feet for swimming pools and spas. But it is increased to 20 feet for garages and carports that actually face the street. So if you're going to back out onto the street, you have to have a 20-foot setback. This is not a garage or a carport. And the purpose for having that setback around the structures is for access, fire safety. And again, that 20-foot would be to allow for increased traffic visibility and to protect any pedestrians that may be walking. This is the site. The structure setback, four feet, four inches from the side yard setback, which is the wall. That is a photo of the structure. So the applicant's justification for requesting the zoning modification for the reduced setback is that it was constructed under the agreement that the contractor would obtain all necessary permits. There are three findings that your commission must make in order to approve a zoning modification for a reduced setback. And that would be that it would not be materially detrimental to the public welfare nor injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity. That the setback is necessary to permit an appropriate improvement on the lot, and it would be consistent with the purposes of the ordinance. If those findings can be made, it can be subject to conditions to protect public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. Staff believes those findings can be made, and there are recommended conditions of approval with your draft resolution. And one of those being to obtain building permits to ensure that the electrical and the structural meets building code. The zoning modification process, a planning director can consider a zoning modification at a public hearing. That was done on June 8th. However, there was public opposition regarding use of the structure. And again, that was the welding that was going on in the structure. So therefore, the project was referred back to staff at the planning director level, and that went to allow for investigate the allegations. And if there is opposition at the planning director level, that request has to either be denied or forwarded to planning commission. So therefore, rather than go back to planning director's hearing where we had possible denial, we decided to come forward to your planning commission. The investigation was conducted subsequent to June 8th. And code enforcement did determine there was a welding operation on site. City Attorney's Office sent a cease and desist letter on July 7th. And just this week, August 18th, we received photos that the welding machine has been removed from the shop or the structure. In response to the request for comments from the public, we did receive 10 in support, and we received one in opposition that was provided to your commission in the form of a memo. We, subsequent to that, this afternoon, we received one more letter in opposition. It was an email in opposition to the structure setback. So your planning commission has several options tonight. You could approve the zoning modification request to allow four feet, four inches where 10 feet's required. You could deny the zoning modification request. Or if there's information that's not available for you to make an informed decision, you could continue this request to a date certain. And again, what you are considering is the placement of the structure on site. You're not considering the use that would occur in that structure. If this structure was set back 10 feet from the side yard setback, and there was a use that was illegal, it would not be in front of your commission. It would go through code enforcement. So again, if there's any future use, if welding does reoccur, that will be a code enforcement issue. I complete staff's presentation.
Thank you, Director Johnson. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, my name is Jeff Hurley. I'm the current... One of the current owners of the property. Thank you, guys, all for your time and the work you guys do for the city. First of all, we had got this building done approximately three years ago, under the assumption that it was permitted properly. We did our curbing for our driveway access. All that was all permitted. We were assumed the contractor had done it properly. Last year, we applied for a business permit through my property for my shop. We were just using it for a regular storage building for, you know, personal stuff. So we applied for this permit, and I applied for a welding fabrication permit from the city. It was granted to me on the property, under the assumption that I wasn't running a full welding operation. What I was doing is what is called tacking. And that's applying a one-second to two-second touch to material just to hold them together. And I had to bring this in front of the supervisors to get it approved. It was approved. However, I switched the line of work I was doing. I was no longer welding inside the shop. What I ended up doing is I ended up buying a plasma table because it was a lot better process. And what it does is it cuts out artwork. So I changed my line of work to where I was cutting out artwork with a plasma table. That was misinterpreted as welding. It is a cutting process. It is a fabrication process. However, the table was extremely quiet. What it was is my air compressor. My air compressor was a little bit loud. And that was brought before a board as a complaint, which then they came out and investigated and said, whoa, whoa, you can't do this. So I was like, okay, no problem. What can I do? So we've been in the process now of trying to figure out what we can do in this process. We then found out that the building wasn't permitted properly, which created a whole nother issue. So we applied for the zone modification permit. And according to the rules of the residents, it cannot... Anytime you add buildings to a property, it cannot exceed 45% of the total property's space. With the shop, it only adds up to 22.5%. So we're considerably under what we should be or what we are allowed per the property. So we've been in the process of doing that since then. You know, I did get served by the city attorney, and I did talk to her and told her I wasn't welding what I was doing. But we've, like I said, rectified that situation. I've moved to a whole nother facility now. I've got to do a lot of work there now to get everything up to where I can actually run the business there. But what we're asking is we've paid, I think, close to $3,000 for this permit, trying to make sure that we're doing this the right and proper way. Because we thought we were in good standing, and apparently, we're not. But we do want to make it right and do what is right. We're not trying to get around nothing. So we're just hoping that the planning commission can consider this, that we are working and trying to do our best to make sure that we meet all the guidelines and do stuff properly with the property. And we're doing it in a safe manner. It's behind an eight-foot wall, so you hardly even see any of the structure as well on this. So I appreciate it, and thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Mayda Hurley. I'm the property owner, and I've been there 12 years. And I want to thank every one of you guys first, especially Paul and the planning commission. They've done a lot of hard work to help us and make this better for the community. And we just don't want to be disruptive members. We just want to do the right thing, and we just hope that you guys consider the changes we've done just to be better neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this project? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and proceed. Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. All right. Does any commissioner wish to ask any questions of the public or staff on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter. It's only the time to ask questions. Commissioner Wade.
Just a quick question to staff to synthesize this down to its essence, I guess. We're not making... We're not doing anything involving welding today or equipment or any of that. We're looking at this building, whether it's appropriate for the property, to make an exception for this property, primarily because of the setback. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Wade.
Okay. That's it, thanks.
Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant or the staff? I have one question for staff, if you don't mind. I'm a little confused by this map called Site Plan 2, which shows this shop in relation to the block wall and to the curb. And we talk about having a 10-foot setback. But what is the dimension from the back of sidewalk to the wall at this point? Does anybody know? You can go ahead and come to the microphone and ask that question if you know the answer to it.
Yes, it's actually on the map up there on the top part where I drew the thing. It shows it's 10 feet from the sidewalk. They told me that my property line started at the curb when I went down there. So I measured from the curb to the edge of the wall is 10 feet. From the edge of the wall to the shop is another four feet, four inches. So in my opinion, we were over the 10 feet. But then they told me I needed a 20-foot setback and that I was five feet, four inches over the line. But that only applies if it's facing the street, which mine's not facing. So I'm confused on that same part as well because, under what I'm being told, I'm over the 10 feet. So it shouldn't even be...
Yeah, we're going to clarify that right now, so...
That's where I'm confused as well.
Yeah. Thank you. Does staff have any comment on this issue?
That's correct. The property line is typically at the wall. You have a right-of-way for the city street. I don't have the full dimensions on there. But the property line is not at the curb.
Does anybody have the real parcel map for this?
We can get it in time.
Okay, we can... Yeah. All right. Does any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, Commissioner Lomas would like to ask some questions.
Okay. And so, this is the applicant's drawing. Where is staff's attachment to show where the property line is?
That's what Chair Coleman asked for, and that's what we're going to pull up.
There we go. You're the chairman. I'm going to wait.
Well, here, they're looking it up right now. Oh, yeah, that's what they're doing right now. Do you need a break? Does staff need a break?
Unless you have other further questions for the applicant, it'll take staff a little bit to pull up the maps.
All right. Does any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll reconvene at... Can you get 10? Five? Five minutes? Okay. 6:30. All right. We'll just sit here. All right. So we're in adjournment for somewhere... So we're in adjournment for somewhere between five and 10 minutes. All right, here's what staff has what they need, so we'll go back on the record. Mr. Johnson, would you like to address the questions that are...
So, from center line, you have 20 feet to the flow line, which is the curb, and then you have 10 foot from the curb to the edge of the property line. So, from the curb to the property line is 10 feet, and I believe that's what he's showing, is 10 feet to the, to the wall, and then from the wall back into the street area, you have a four-foot, like easement, and that'd be the landscape you see there. So you probably have a six-foot sidewalk, four-foot landscape, and then the wall, which is the property line.
I have that one, I'm talking about...
You don't have this one.
Parcel map, yeah.
Yeah, we can put it on the overhead.
Okay, do I know what I'm looking at here? Is that, could you turn your microphone on, please?
Where's the button? You got it?
So I believe Public Works will correct me if I'm wrong, when you see the 20-foot, 20-foot right there from center line, you have 20-foot to the flow line, and then you have another 10 feet to the edge of the property line. So you have 30-foot from center line to property line.
Okay.
So, 20-foot from, 20-foot from center line to the curb, flow line, and then you have another 10-foot to the property line.
So we're confirming that the block wall is set on the property line? And then his, his building is four foot, four inches from the wall?
From right here, yes.
Okay.
Supposed to have 10 feet from here over, and he has four foot four.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
I mean, so like on the landscape strip and the curb and gutter, the app, or the property owner's not required to maintain that.
Because you can stop mowing that lawn over there, so...
Is it okay if I add something?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, on this process, before this, when we were having that side gate put in and that curb cut and getting it permitted, there was mailboxes there. We actually went to the postal department to have those removed and moved across the street, because there's a sump across the street where there was already mailboxes, and that wasn't on our property as far as being developed as they were supposed to be there. They told us that that was in fact our property where the mailboxes were, and that they had to move them, one, because it was actually on our property, not city property, and it was also a bus stop, and they couldn't have mailboxes at a bus stop. So they moved those telling us that that was our property. So...
All right, it is what it is at this point, so let's just deal with the circumstances that we have right now. Let me ask you a question while you're up here, because I think it was my turn to ask questions, so... Are we, no, we're asking questions, we're not, we're commenting, we're asking questions now. All right. So I'll ask you a question. So, who built this shop for you?
It was a company out of Fresno, a construction company out of Fresno. I believe it was American All Steel Buildings, and the planning commission actually gave us a number to contact the contractor's board, because they illegally built this without a permit, and I guess they're liable in some, some aspect on that part. We haven't pursued that part yet, because like I said, we're trying to get this, they, the planning department told us this is, this is acceptable the way it is, it's just a process, you got to pay for the zone modification, a few things to get it to be approved. So that's why we paid the money and started this process this way, is because they told us it was a process that can be passed.
Thank you. Commissioner Bauer, do you have a question?
Just to clarify, this was built three years ago?
All right. We don't have any, nobody spoke in opposition, so we don't have any rebuttal period, so at this time, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comment and action. Commissioner Bauer, did you want to comment? Or did I not cancel your speaker thing?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Bauer.
What, can you give us our options again?
Can you read those out loud, so the audience knows what we were talking about?
Absolutely. Your options tonight are to approve the zoning modification, deny the zoning modification, you could continue to date certain if there's unanswered questions, or if you feel that it's going to take time to answer those questions, there is a fourth option of referring it back to staff, similar to what we did with the planning director, and then we would come back and re-schedule and re-notice everyone.
All right. Mr. Bowers, are you finished, or do you have more comments?
I guess my comment on this, and I'll leave it to the rest of the commissioners to, to add some seasoning to this. I don't see a need for it to have the man tear down this entire structure, tomato, tomato, but I, I would hate to see him have to tear down his entire structure. So, I'll leave it to you guys to kind of add your own seasoning, but that's kind of where I'm leaning towards.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Any other commissioner, oh, Commissioner Basitash.
I just, I like the fact that you've got some neighbors' information in here that spoke positively about it, and that you got some feedback from those around you that I think means a lot about community support and just kind of being there together. It didn't seem like anybody else was going to say anything else, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation and approve.
If there's no other commissioner comments, I'll second it.
So that was a motion by Commissioner Basitash, and a second by Commissioner Wade. I'm sorry. You guys look alike. Sorry. So, that was Commissioner Basitash made the motion, and Commissioner Bowers, second.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Just a note to the applicant that the only thing we decided tonight was the zoning modification to allow that structure. We do not consider or rule on the use of that. You're still required to comply with the local building code, and so the building department will be visiting you, I suppose, how that works, to go over any code compliance issues. All right. Thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it. Yeah, and I, literally, I would pursue that issue with the contractor license board if you actually had a contractor build a building without a permit, so...
We are, we're looking at almost $75,000 we have in this right now, so it's, it's a huge burden. I do appreciate it, thank you guys.
If I could remind the applicant, you will need to initiate contact with the building department?
Yeah, we've already set stuff up to where, depending on what happens here, we already know what we need to do, and I've already got pictures of underground work, everything, and PG&E actually came out and already inspected it, because we had solar, so we can provide that to the city as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Director Johnson, do we have any communications?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to provide a quick update on the update to the general plan. That was brought before your commission by Development Services Director a little over a year ago. We are, we do have an RFP, Request for Proposal, out on the streets. It's been out since January. We expect, it'll close next Tuesday, excuse me, we expect to go ahead and make a selection at that time, and then the process will move along, and then there'll be more involvement from your commission. Also note that the next meeting, which would be scheduled for September 2nd, is canceled. We will be having a meeting on September 16th.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Any commissioners have any comments? Yeah, so I still have Commissioner Basitash up, did I just not cancel that, or?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item, adjournment.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
All right, thank you, we're adjourned.
At what time?